Alright, let's get this started here. Hey everybody, how's it going? Name is Red, also go by Athlete over on the TryHackMe channel, Discord. Um, and what am I doing today? Today I am trying out the Blaster. Uh, room. Okay, so I already started up. Um, what I usually do is I'll try and sort of T-MAX. I will have my directory created for TrackMe, named it Blaster. So that way I can take any notes that I might need. And uh, I have this, but you guys don't really need to see it, so I'm gonna try something different instead of having that up the whole time. I'm gonna have my screen up so that way I can minimize distractions, I guess. So throughout this room, we'll be looking at alternative modes of exploration without the use of Metasploit or really exploitation tools in general behind Nmap and Dirbuster. To wrap up the room, we'll be pivoting back to these tools for persistence and additional steps we can take. Without further delay, let's deploy our target machine. So went ahead and deployed the machine. It's gonna take a minute for the IP address to show up. So, really like this art. And I guess it was made by Varg. Been feeling a little under the weather recently, so uh, I wasn't sure I was gonna be able to stream today, but I'm really happy that uh, I'm here. Like the old school feel is here. Look at that old Windows dealiebob and the video game. See how that goes? Apparently this room is a remix of another room that Dark had done. Um, and I guess this room was uh, Darkstar 7471 and CMNATIC. C-N-Matic? Cinematic? Cinematic? I guess. Alright, uh, so I'm gonna go ahead. I'm gonna click this because I deployed the machine. Says it's a Windows box. Give it a few minutes. Oof, so it could be three to five minutes uh, before it comes online. It's been about a minute and a half. So what else can we do in the meantime? Uh, let's see. Hydrate? Alright, so this has four tasks. So let's go ahead and let's create a I have a notepad here and I'm gonna name it Blaster. I'm gonna go ahead and put it in my TrackMe folders here. See if I can start naming them .md. So I tried uh, creating a website recently. And I guess I'll share that with you while I wait for the shenanigans to load up. But, athlete.com is my username. Uh, and I have a few different things that I think are important. Uh, physical fitness as well as mental toughness and um, and giving back to the community in some form. So uh, I used to do a lot of extra life, so raising money for children's hospitals. Uh, I've kind of gotten away from that for right now and there's this Innocent Lives Foundation that we're currently fundraising for. And you know, just to make all this kind of like for something, right? And so we're gonna use our powers for good. Uh, we're gonna be a hero and help identify anonymous child predators and help bring them to justice. So feel free to go ahead, go to athlete.com and uh, donate or join a team, whatever. If you'd so like. Uh, I'm gonna start putting up all my write-ups on this page too, so hopefully it'll be good. Let's, let's try to do good write-ups then, yeah? Alright, so task one was uh, mission start. Task two. Activate forward scanners and launch proton. Okay, proton torpedoes. We'll load up task three, preaching, control room, and task four is adoption into the collective. Alright, so um, how do we wanna do things, yeah? So mission start. How do I start? I do msftb run. I know they said they don't really wanna use Metasploit, but I like uh, the database that it affords me. While it does that, I'm gonna go ahead and um, split the screen. I'm splitting the screen sideways, so we'll see if this works for me or not. And uh, we'll try to load up a Firefox instance, so maybe we can go to the webpage. If there's a webpage. So what is our IP address now? Our IP address is 101044190. Cool, so we can see that it's a Windows server. An IIS server. So, we'll go ahead and start uh, Dirbuster. See what it said. So, in our mission start, you know, mission briefing, it said we'll be looking at alternative modes of exploitation, exploitation without the use of Metasploit or really exploitation tools in general. Beyond Nmap and Dirbuster. So I guess Dirbuster is something that they uh, want us to use. I use GoBuster shipping. So, GoBuster. Hey, hey, how's it going? Uh, I see you on Twitter all the time, man. Appreciate it. Thanks for the follow. Alright, so uh, GoBuster, I'm using Dir. How's your night going? Our website is gonna be 101044190. Uh, and our word list user. Share word list and uh, because uh, we're gonna be using uh, Dirbuster. We're gonna use Dirbusters. Let's use the common one. Common.txt. And we'll output this to um, common. GoBuster common. In case we see anything. Alright, so in the meantime, gonna go over to the next screen and we will do some Nmap scans. So, db and map. Uh, do we wanna go do basic stuff? Let's do the basic stuff. Uh, we'll do service default scripts. I hate using the scripts off that, but I'm sure it'll be fine. 101044190. Yeah, cool. Should be good. And this will give us our top 1,000 ports. Uh, it's gonna run a default scan against them. Ooh, uh. Host seems down. Alright, so uh, we're gonna have to do tac pn in order to uh, I guess it turned off icmp probes. Uh, and now I'm definitely not gonna wanna use my default scripts. And I don't even want the services, honestly, because I don't want this to take forever. Looks like our common, uh, dirb did not come back with anything. Oh, sorry, I have my uh, my phone going bananas here. Alright, port 80 and 3,000. Okay, so uh, RDP. Cool. Um, since common didn't do anything. Let's go with small and we're gonna go with uh, GoBuster's uh, small directory scan. See if anything pops out there. Alright, uh, so let's go ahead and we'll do the same thing, but for all ports. And then if we need to, well, then after that, then we'll do a server scan and default scripts. You solved this box last month. Don't remember solving it. Alright, well, either it was really good or really easy, so uh, we'll see how that goes. Yeah, I've been, I've been looking at the uh, the trilogy. I did Blue, I did Ice, and I guess Blaster is this last one. So, um, you know, I'm hoping I don't, it's a chill study session, so no pressure. Uh, if I don't, if I don't get to the end today, so be it. Right? Excuse me. Got a hole in my lip. Alright. So it looks like we got a directory uh, retro. So I could check that out while the rest of my scans are going. I think it came back as a 200, right? Oh no, it came back as a 301. Alright, so it's probably gonna yell at me, which is fine. Retro fanatics, retro games, books, movie. I love it. Oh, I love it. Oh, I love this so much. This is so pretty. Oh, this, I'm a very magic gamer and uh, this, this makes my heart sing right here. Alright, so what do we got here? The Tron Arcade Cabinet by Wade. Alright. Zelda Hidden Fan Room. Oh, this is so cool. A Pac-Man walkthrough. Oh, I love this. This is so good. I don't even wanna do the rest of the challenge. I just wanna keep, I just wanna keep watching this. Ready Player One. Oh, Wade, Wade Wilson? Was that the name of the main character? I can't believe the movie based on my favorite book of all time is gonna come out in a few days. Maybe it's because my name is so similar to the main character. No, Wade, not Wade Wilson. That Deadpool, right? Um, but I honestly feel a deep connection to the main character Wade. Keep mistyping the name of his avatar. Wouldn't have had a login. Okay. Uh, Percival. Percival's the, the character. I think eventually I'll get it done either way. I'm really excited to see this movie. Alright, so we have a username Wade. And Percival is a misspelling of Percival is what we're gonna be looking at. Okay. So see where we, where we can log in. Retro Index PHP. Author Wade. Alright. All the posts that he's made. It's a WordPress. Alright. Uh, we see WordPress. We're definitely gonna go to WP scan, right? Um, let's see, what do we wanna try? Let's try to cut this in half. So uh, we saw that it's WordPress. We're gonna do uh, WordPress scan. See how we use this. Ta-tac URL and whatever options we have. Alright, so usernames. The username list would be like a misspelling of Percival. So, I mean, recently learned how to how to change a, a list, but I don't know what kind of misspelling he would use. So I'm gonna try to scan URL with uh, it was URL, right? Yeah, URL. And the URL was http 10.10.44190. Cool. Retro forward slash retro. True. Alright, let's see if this gets us anything. You wanna update now? Uh, sure, why not? Alright, whatever. Alright, update completed. We got WP scan going right now. Alright, so our top 1,000 ports got us nothing different than what we already knew we had. So we're gonna go ahead and do a csv on uh, ports. 80 and 2389. Alright. Oops. Alright, so I'm using T-MAX. It does not like to scan like normal. You gotta go into copy mode to, to do it. So, we found some good stuff here. Interesting S entries. Server is ISS 10.0. Powered by PHP. Uh, XML RPC seems to be enabled. Uh, looks like there's a readme. Alright. External prompt seems to be enabled. Alright. You know what I didn't do that I really should have done? Uh, because as soon as there's a webpage, right? Like I should, you know, to go robots.txt. Whether it's there or not is irrelevant. That's just something that I should be doing. Okay. Nothing there. So what else we got here? We have retro. WP Chrome. PHP. Oh, it looks like the uh, posts are by date too. Copy link. So let's see if I can go in there. Okay. Nothing. That's okay. Parcel. Alright, so let's make a note. Uh, mission start. Activate forward scanners. What the hell was the, sorry, I didn't even read what task two was. How many? How many ports? Start answering these questions. I got too enamored by how beautiful the webpage looked. Alright, let's start knocking out some of this stuff here. Alright. Alright, two ports seem to be open on the system, so uh, cool. Whoop, whoop, that got us some points there. Alright, uh, looks like there's a web server running. What is the title of the page? We discover when we browse it. So it is Retro Fanatics? Doesn't seem to be correct because it's expecting a certain oh, okay. This is what they, they wanted to show us. ISS Windows Server. I'm sure of it. I, IIS Windows Server. Alright, got an extra point there. Alright, interesting. Let's see if there's anything else on the server by fuzzing it. What do we discover? We discover retro. Knocking out points. Navy toy discovery, hidden directory, potential username to rediscover. Uh, that was that parseable. Let's try it out. Make sure that it's correct. Oh, uh, Wade is what they're gonna start with. Yep. Calling through the post. Seems like our user, our user has some difficulties logging in. Oh, maybe parseable is the password. Alright, killing it. Alright, login to the machine via Microsoft RDP. Alright, well thank you very much for the beautiful page. We got any more stuff here that we wanna read on? Cool, got a little something about the Easter egg in the Legend of Zelda. Some Pac-Man stuff. Making sure that I don't, whoa, 2564 split screen. Geez, this looks uh, ridiculous. Alright. Just still kind of going through the pages, just in case. Alright, and I think that's it, right? So, that we've done that. In posting this, I realized I should pick up one of these cabinets. They're just so cool. Login. Yeah, the login page right here. I wonder. Uh, sure. Let's see if this works. Wade, and then we'll go with Parcel. I don't think that I, I, well, I don't know. I don't know that it'll work or it won't work. Let's see. Hey, we're in. Alright. Uh, cool. Well, I feel like it's gonna be a pretty easy win from here on out. Uh, let's continue with the questions and then we will, we'll move on. Long to the machine via RDP. Cool, let's do that. I'm gonna kill this here. Because I no longer need to do that. Um, what is it? Uh, apropos RDP. Xfree, RDP, ta-tac, Wade. I think this is the excuse me. I told you, I'm not feeling 100%, so alright. What was the syntax for free RDP? Or, yeah, xfree RDP. Cool. Don't need a file. Don't think I need options. Server is gonna be 10.10.44190. Sure. Uh, dang it. Definitely forgot something. Uh, here are some examples right here. Alright. So xfree RDP user is gonna be Wade. Password is gonna be parseable. And height is gonna be 50% and we'll do 10.10.44190 now. I don't think we gotta do that, right? Are you gonna work now for us? Alright, I think it does. Great. Alright, uh, I think I might have messed up my oh my god, this is so ridiculous. Alright, uh, whoops. That's what I get for height 50%. Let me get rid of that 50% thing and see what happens. Alright, that's better. Ooh, look at this, pretty. Alright, uh, we're in. Login to the machine. Read user.txt. User.txt is right here. Boom. No, don't want that. Hack Player One. Alright. Cool. Pitching a control room. So now that we've gained system access, or excuse me, access on our system, let's see if we can escalate to start. Let's scatter out the system, see if we can find anything of interest. So let's go ahead and put out the questions here. Uh, this, this is a fun one. I love, I don't know, maybe it's just me and my nostalgia or whatever. Maybe I'm getting old. I'm I like it when things call back to things I know about. You know what I mean? Alright, so when a new rating machine is often useful to look at what the user was last doing and look around the machine and see if you can find the CVE which was researched on the server. What CVE was it? Alright, that's not gonna be right there. Uh, this makes me, this makes me wanna pull up like uh, OS, uh, OS query. Um, trying to see if I can get that installed, but let's go ahead to just the history and see if anything pops up there. Hoping, hoping I don't regret looking into this user's history. I'm sure it's fine. Uh, alright, using a tax PC, maybe, maybe nothing. Favorites, favorites bar. Favorites, favorites bar. Alright. Perhaps not. Darkstar. Seven four seven one dot com. Long try hack me. Alright. So what is this? Darksec Reddit. Let me see if I can figure out what this is. If anything. Nothing, alright. I feel like there's, there should be like a shell history or something for. Uh, users. See if I can go to CMD. So I got me nothing. Um. Do they have another browser maybe? Men's viewer. Who's name Retro Web? Nine hundred and twenty application events. I don't know if it's gonna give me anything. Alright, let's go open this up here. MySQL. Alright. Application error. I need like a shell bags or something like, um. So these are all old. It's gotta be something like on that December date, right? Let's see what the most recent thing is. It's not gonna be any of these. Auto property, something from May. And then back in. Alright, so I don't know that this is gonna help me out here. What else could they have been researching? We already went through Internet Explorer. Doesn't look like they have a lot of much of anything, honestly. Go check out PowerShell. Maybe PowerShell has something. Nothing in console history. Man, they gotta give me something here. Hmm. So the hint that they gave me is sometimes looking at the history in a user's web browser can be very insightful, so. Maybe I need to go back. I must have missed something. I am on. The user. Going to Internet Explorer. Inter options. What, what, what am I gonna send a smiley for, bro? What is going on here? It does look like the history has been cleared though. So I don't know that this is gonna actually do anything. Maybe I'm on the. I mean, I am doing everything that's supposed to be done, right? Nothing in recycle dish, uh, recycle bin. Disco here to dark. Does Discord dark say? Oh, okay. It's just the, uh, the light here to the background. And they had me do some like crazy forensic stuff. Internet Explorer. Logs, nothing. Nothing saved. Alright. WMI activity. What we got there? Now stuff looks like it was last done in twenty sixteen, so I don't know if that's gonna be the case either. Don't have permission to look at that. Oh, this is like the webpage. What am I missing? Cause there's absolutely nothing in. The history for me to play with. Ah, man. I might have been able to reopen the last session. Let's see, what am I missing? Gotta be missing something. The thing in favorites. He downloads. Seen nothing in downloads. The closest to anything that that I've got is darker Darkstar seven four seven one. So let's, let's go ahead, go to that webpage, I guess. Darksec. This is, this is like actual webpage though, so. Can't possibly be hello. I just found a, um. Uh, basics before encoded something or other, so now I gotta go figure out what's going on with that. Now it just says to be added shortly, blah. Alright. So. I mean, do I need to like restart this? Do you think maybe that's what I gotta do? Alright, I'm gonna try to restart the machine. I just terminated it. I'm going to restart the machine. Just in case there was a, an issue or something with, uh, the machine itself. And I'm gonna take a quick break. We've been going at this for about forty nine minutes right now. So let's go ahead and we'll take a break. And we'll figure out what exactly is the problem here. Alright, everybody go hydrate. Alright, so let's see. Oh, thank you very much for the subscription. Appreciate it. Alright. So. We have a new. Ten dot ten dot seven dot two five two. See if we can get into parcel here. I mean Wade's account. I do like this background now. I may have to cop it for myself. Nothing in favorites, nothing in Bing. Nothing searched for. Alright, so, why not skip this? Let's see if we can move on to the next question and move over there. So, let's see what it says, "When a numbering machine is often useful to look what the user was last doing, cannot see what the CVE they were looking for was." So, looks like an executable file necessary for the exploitation of vulnerability and the user really didn't clean up very well was the name of the executable. Alright, so... Do see executable for HUPD. HUPD... CVE. I'm gonna try... That. So, I just tried, uh, this CVE, and it's CVE 2019-1388. Alright, so... This is what we did. Because of the, uh, hint that we have here, it says that... Alright, it says that there's an executable and it did not clean up well. So, took a look at this, so there's an executable right on the desktop. And then I just Googled "hupd" and typed in CVE. And I got ourselves, I got us the answer for the previous question, CVE 2019-1388. So, "hupd" is associated with that CVE. So, now our job is to... Research vulnerability and how to exploit it, exploit it now to gain an elevated terminal, okay? So, let's do research. I know. So, this is what our research is gonna look like. "hupd CVE", that's what I did. Let's, uh... See what does. "There is a privileged escalation vulnerability in the Windows certificate dialog allowing an attacker to easily elevate privileges." Looks like there's a YouTube video on the case. Of course, you do not need "hupd" to exploit that specific vulnerability if, yeah, in your next raid teaming engine, it's just easier. Some dude named Eduardo, Brian Bravo. Alright, so... Payload all the things. I guess it's a... A popular one. Let's go to MITRE. So, I gotta say about it. Okay, well... Uh, I do not have the password for this. So, I guess I actually need to read what I gotta do. Let's make sure we don't get any tryhackme randoms in here, tryhackme. I don't wanna get like wrapped up in somebody's... Alright, let's go ahead. Alright, that page is not around. What if this YouTube is around? "Video demonstration bug in user account could allow an attacker to escalate privileges on infected OS, make some patches in November." So, hopefully it doesn't mess up. Okay, I don't want words. I see that... We got evil, okay, cool, "hupd.exe". Alright, so right around here is where I'm gonna need to pay attention. Oh no. I'm gonna need to pay attention, closes it immediately. So, Properties, Security and Block. Right-click, Properties, Security. Oh, it's under General. Or maybe because I just downloaded it. Run as administrator, oh. Show details. Show whatever. Issued by Verisign. So, then we gotta go to Verisign. And go get, save as Verisign. First to location. Windows system thirty-two. Red star. Okay, so... Verisign.com repository CPS. Verisign... ...com repository. Alright, uh... So, I did not catch all that, ah, go back. Go there, File, Save As. Web archive, single file. How do I do that? I don't know if this is gonna work. Alright, uh, we'll go to tryhackme site, Blaster. Cool. You know, what are we saving this as, star dot star? Doesn't make any sense. Okay. So, I'm here. Actually, let me... How am I gonna spawn a terminal from here? Oh, okay, a bunch... Of these things have been started. File, Save As. Think I just broke this computer. Whoa, we did it! Anti-authority... System. Now, we've confirmed that we have an L A D prompt, let's go to the administrators at top. Excuse me. Uh, C, System, Users. Type, type text. Coin operated exploitation. I'm gonna have to... Gonna have to type this one out by myself. Oh boy. Alright, coin... Operated... Exploitation, alright. Dope, dope. So, adoption into collective, now that we thoroughly compromised the target machine, let's return to our exploitation tools. Alright, so... Let's go back here. Start answering some questions. Alright. Moving on up, we're, uh, we're gonna make it, folks. Was really concerned there for a while, I was like, how the hell... Read these attacks, oh, I didn't, uh, I didn't give myself my points. Alright. Parcel. Gotta tie it up, gotta make sure everything's nice and neat. Alright, task four, adoption into collective, let's go get those questions. What's a deal breaker, let's see. A plane nerd? Congratulations on being a plane nerd, do you fly planes now? Aviator? Oh no, oh no! See if I can get back into my, uh... Oh, man, alright, yes, I'm safe. Let's go back. Close all this stuff, that was very interesting exploit. Alright, uh, cool. Here are some of the questions I'm gonna have to answer. Ads B, big nerd, I'm building scripts for Elon Jet guy. Elon Jet guy, nice. Yeah, I have no idea about ads, honestly, I'd... I haven't set this up in like, for a billion years. So, if there's ads running or whatever, my apologies, like, have no clue. Not like I make any money off a Twitch. I'm just here to study, man. Alright, let's go back, uh, okay, "Return to your attacking machine for this next bit. Since we know our victim machine is running Windows Defender, let's go ahead and try a different method." Of payload delivery, for this, we'll be using the script web delivery exploit within Metasploit. Launch Metasploit now, and select Metasploit Multi-Script Web Delivery for use, alright. I can do that. Use exploit multi... Script. Come on, autocomplete, let's go. Show options. Uh, alright, cool, so it looks like... Alright, this looks fine. Show missing, make sure I'm not missing anything. Alright. Looks like it's running. Run the following command on the target machine, I can do, well, I would be able to do that if... You know what, I can zoom in on this pane. Boom. See, I'm learning, I'm learning how to use T-Mux. Automatic dependent surveillance broadcast. Uh, Aviator Aaron, no, I don't know what you're talking about. I have no idea what that is. Are you a person I know in the so-called real life? Python. No. Uh. You know what? Maybe I can get it on, uh, Ubuntu? I don't know about this Python thing. Maybe I gotta try a different. Oops, that's not what I want. Alright, cool. Uh. PHP. Maybe PHP will work. Set targets, PHP. Show options. Multi-script web delivery. See. What can I do? Show exploits. Show exploits? Wait, that's not what I want. Show, show targets. Set targets one. Show options. Oh, I know who that is. Yeah, yeah. Uh, Elon, Elon jet guy. So I already have a Python. Thing going, but this does not run Python. So what to do? Set target one. Show options. There we go. Uh, run? Abort four, 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 five? No. Oh, uh. Show payloads. Set payload interpreter. We'll set it to four. Not a compatible payload. Why the hell are you offering it to me, huh? Um, okay. Set target. Two. There we go. Now we're talking. Alright. PowerShell. Uh, cool. Automatic dependent surveillance broadcast. Sounds very fancy. Paste. Does it work? I think we're in. Alright, yep, my interpreter shell popped. So I think we're good on that. No answer needed. But what did we use? Uh, set target. To two for PowerShell. That's what we needed. And we needed to set payload to Windows. Sessions that I. Cool. So we have a session going on. Oh, duh. Uh, cool. So this thing told us to do, said it's a PowerShell. PowerShell is two. Uh, so after setting your payload, set your L host. Alright, we did that already. Finally set our payload. We did a Windows interpreter. Obviously, we did that. Return to terminal, we spawn with our exploit. Did that? And. Cool. Sessions that I want. See if what I can see. Alright, cool. Um. Last but certainly not least, let's look at persistence mechanism via X, uh, Metasploit. What command can we run in our interpreter console to set a persistence but automatically starts at this, at when the system boots on? Include anything beyond the base command? And option for boot startup. So we'll go to help. And we'll look for persistence. Alright. Oh, I'm sorry. Had hit me to like sniff all up in your ear. Uh. Alright, so file system command, command, core commands. Channel pivot migrate. Uh, okay. Run. Uh, I'm wondering, it's probably gonna be like a registry. Thing, right? Alright, so let's do some Googling. It's here. So, um. Metasploit. Persistence. Uh, Windows. Interpretation service. Alright. With this interpreter, offensive security half for us. Run persistence tag age. That's exactly how much we need. So run persistence. Tag age. I'm gonna go read what that does. Alright, so. Automatically start a matching exploit handler to connect to the thing. So start on boot as a service. When a system starts, that's when we wanted to do it, right? Set up persistence which automatically starts when the system boots. Automatically starts. Automatically start on boot as a service with system privileges. So it would be run persistence tag S, right? Run persistence tag S. Cannot create, cannot execute persistence, format message failed to retrieve. Window user logs on. Maybe it's attack you. Automatically start the agent on the system boot. That's literally what they're asking us to do. So it's run persistence tag X. Alright. Uh, cool. So I think that's it. I think we did it. Alright, so let's review. Alright, for the mission start. Deploy the thing. We did that. How many ports are on it? We did that by using nmap to scout it out. We then went and found that it was an I S, I S Windows server. We used Go Buster to go, uh, the brute force directory enumeration. We found retro. Upon finding retro, we found that it was a WordPress. And, uh, on one of the posts, we found a username Wade with a parsable password. Using that, we were able to RDP in and got the, uh, user text. Uh, then we were kind of guided by the questions to do research on the CVE. It told us that they didn't clean up very well, so I found out that H H U P D was part of a uh, CVE two thousand nineteen thirteen eighty eight. Vulnerability regarding elevated privileges because of uh, bad user privilege, uh, protection. I don't know how else to put it. Um. We got a elevated prompt, got a root flag. And then after doing a reconnaissance, vulnerability analysis, exploitation, post-exploitation for us was setting up, uh, persistence. Via PowerShell, uh, well. We were able to get on the target with PowerShell and then set up persistence, uh, upon boot. So now every time it boots up, we should be able to get it. So. Let's see, we've been at this for about an hour and a half. We knocked out this box. And, uh, I think that's it for us. Thank you very much for hanging out with me during all this. Appreciate it. Oh boy. Uh, so catch me next time. We're gonna be doing the fishing rooms every Friday until we're done with them. So it'll be, uh, uh. Friday night fishing with Red, AKA Athlete. So see you next time.